I call the Maplewood City Council meeting to order on October twenty fifth, two thousand twenty-two. Just a moment. We acknowledge that we are on the traditional land of the Kickapoo, Osage, Miami, Iroquois, and Great Sioux Nation people. At this time, if you would please stand and join me in reciting the Pledge of Allegiance. All right, before we go into item number four, which is roll call, I would ask that we all just take a moment of silence to pay respect to the babies and to the community, to our community, but specifically the Central Visual and Performing Arts High School in the Tower Grove area of Saint Louis. So at this time, we could just take a moment of silence. Thank you. Item number four, roll call vote. Mr. Clerk?
Councilmember Crossley.
Yeah.
Councilmember Fockingham.
Here.
Councilmember Homa.
Here.
Mayor Canapper.
Here.
Councilmember Page.
Here.
Councilmember Phillips.
Here.
Madam Mayor, a quorum is present.
Thank you. I will skip item number five as it is not necessary. Mr. Clerk, item number six.
Approval of the council agenda.
May I have a motion?
Motion to approve. Second.
Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion carries. Mr. Clerk, item number seven.
Public hearing to hear citizens' comments on a request by Tyler Garcia, owner of Locos Tacos, to be located at seventy-three seventy-four Manchester for a full Sunday liquor license, pardon me, for a full and Sunday liquor license.
Thank you. At this time, the public is invited to either step to the podium and make sure that you press the button if you'd like to discuss this item. And if you're joining us via Zoom, then you may raise your Zoom hand, and Mr. Reese will call upon you.
Mayor Canapper, there are no hands on Zoom.
All right, thank you. Mr. Clerk, item number eight.
Public forum.
At this time, the public is invited to step to the podium and provide a comment on whatever they wish. When you step to the podium and you are going to speak, please be sure to hold the button the entire time. If you're joining us via Zoom, please raise your Zoom hand, and Mr. Reese will call upon you. Go ahead.
My name is Bevan Keeter. I am sixteen. I go to MRH High School. I've decided to come here tonight because to talk about an issue that I've seen a lot in our community in recent times and that I've had to deal with firsthand. The amount of homeless population, the unhoused population in our city, I feel like is a major issue and needs to be, I'm not, like, not, like, they don't need to be evicted or anything like that, but I, I have, I don't feel as safe as I used to. Just the last, about two weeks ago on Sunday, a man high on something came to our house, went to the side of our car and just started unchanging right in front of my younger brother Connor and me, just without any regard of, you know, public decency or anything, and then tried to make conversation and things, and he eventually left and went to the little food pickup station by the the, um, I forgot what it's called, but down, down our street. And I just, I, I thought that, you know, maybe I'd come up and talk today and just see if anything could be changed or if anything could happen because I know me and many others in the community don't feel safe. I mean, the crime is risen. A bunch. Saint Louis is now the number one dangerous city in the United States and the seventh most danger, seventh most dangerous city in the world. The only cities above it are cartel cities in Mexico, like Tijuana and places like that. And I just, I, I didn't bring a script or anything, so I'm a little unprepared, but yeah, I just thought that I would share that I that a lot of people are moving and it's harder for businesses to move in, taxes are higher, and it's just like that's an issue that our community needs to deal with some way or another. And if it doesn't, then it can lead to more, more businesses leaving and more people moving, which means less infrastructure and other issues. That's all.
Mr. Keeter, thank you so much. Let me ask you, can you tell us where what you just described regarding the gentleman changing in public? Can you tell us where that occurred?
It occurred right next to our house. He, he saw our Halloween, we have a very big Halloween, very big on Halloween. He saw our Halloween decorations and made a comment about them and then walked to the side of our car. They are on Marietta Avenue. We're the seven through sixteen. That's our house. Walked to the side of our Honda Accord and stripped down to his underwear while talking to Greg or my stepdad and got finished, got finished changing, and while he was changing, he dropped multiple items like tinfoil, needles, and other things, and it, you know, everyone was on edge. No, I mean, he just showed up out of nowhere and started to do that, and my younger brother and his friend were in the front yard. My stepdad's parents were in the backyard. We were trying to have a kind of a outdoor barbecue type thing, and yeah, that's.
I'm sorry that, that you experienced that. I'm sorry that you are experiencing the feeling of being unsafe. And Mr. Reese is here. If you would like to talk with him after the meeting. And Mr. Reese will definitely talk with our Chief of Police, okay? Thank you for having the courage to be here today and talk to us and let us know. Thank you.
Mayor Canapper, there are no hands shown on Zoom.
Thank you. Mr. Clerk, item number nine.
Good evening. My name is Jenny Schmidt, and I live on Elm Avenue. I'm here tonight to make a public comment on the proposed modifications to the short-term vacation rental ordinance. As you all know, I sent you a letter several weeks ago outlining my concerns about this ordinance, which as follows. One, to date, the only reason being given for these changes is that one person in our community wants this change. Two, the council, or at least those advocating for this change, have made no effort to reach out to the community to get their input on something that would potentially affect most of our community. And three, that serious flaws still exist in the remedy provision of the ordinance in the event someone violates it. I wanted to start with the reasoning for this change. To date, the only reason that has been given ever for changing the ordinance to allow a homeowner to now rent out their home as a short-term vacation rental without having to remain on the property for up to thirty-nine years, that one person in our community would like to be able to retire, travel to Europe, rent out their home as a short-term vacation rental to pay for such travel. But I understand all it takes is one resident to point out an issue. If the council determines that it's one that they would like to explore, the next logical step to me would be for the council to really analyze the issue, seek input from those who it most affect, which in this case would be the residents in our community, homeowners or renters alike. Given that previous city's website, there are two thousand one hundred and seven owner-occupied homes in Maplewood, which would now seem to be eligible for this. If the ordinance is changed, it would seem council would want to seek out their input, not only push forward with the change based on the wants of one person, yet this has not occurred. While you've held two work sessions to discuss this, you all have been around long enough to know that these work sessions reach only an extremely small and consistent portion of our community. And I've noted that, to my knowledge, maybe except for one person, all of the public comments made to date have been against it. I continue to struggle to understand why you've pushed this through without stopping to take the time to ask our community what they want. Instead, you're prioritizing the desires of one individual. Next, it's my understanding that Planning and Zoning Commission put a great deal of time and thought into crafting the existing carefully balanced ordinance, and that some of those individuals are still on the commission today. It's also my understanding that no one advocating for this ordinance has reached out to them to get their thoughts, and no, you're not required to seek their input. Now, I'm curious as to what the point of our boards and commissions is then, if not to seek their input on matters that specifically fall within their purview. What message does this send to these individuals who continue to run to their time to serve our community in this way, when the time and dedication they've already committed to the issue at hand is completely disregarded? There was time to hold two work sessions months apart on the topic, so it seems like there would have been time to attend a planning and zoning meeting in between. Third, this council has repeatedly expressed its commitment to helping find ways to address affordable housing in our community. As such, I'm confused by the amount of time and energy spent on the policy that generally is in direct opposition to that goal. The negative effects of short-term vacation rentals on housing affordability are well documented, and while you may argue this change won't affect housing affordability because of the time limitation, I think it's somewhat naive to insist there won't be any effect at all. I'm also curious why you've chosen to spend this much time on a change to ordinance that could potentially have a negative impact on affordability instead of finding, helping to find solutions to the problem. And so spending time on goals to which you've committed yourself, ones that can positively benefit many in our community rather than just one. Finally, while I appreciate the decrease from ninety days to thirty days, this change is essentially meaningless because it was very clear at the work session that if someone violates the ordinance by going over thirty days, because the thirty days is self-reported and not tracked by the city, if someone lies and says they haven't exceeded the time limit, there's really no way for the city to prove it. A brief comment from staff was something like, we could try, but it's not like we can sit outside their house and watch it all night. So then what? So then what? The burden falls on me, the resident, to prove that my neighbor has exceeded the time limit? How would I even do that? Would I have to hire a private investigator? And why should it be my responsibility? You may try to argue this isn't going to happen, but the work session also makes clear that we're already having to pay the city attorney to sue illegally operating short-term violation, uh, short-term vacation rentals that are violating the existing ordinance. So it is illogical to assume the number will increase as you broaden the ordinance. I also think it's fair to say that a person who violates the ordinance by going over thirty days is likely the same kind of person who lie and say they haven't. City staff keeps saying that the remedy for this is that administratively, the applicant is required to attest to the thirty-day limitation in their conditional use permit application, and that their permit can be revoked if they make any false statements or provide false information on their application. But if you can't prove they've exceeded the thirty days, how can you ever prove they provided false information and therefore revoked their permit? It's a pretty simple answer. You can't. So again, here we are with an ordinance that has the potential to impact a large part of our community, with the community having no real remedy if a neighbor violates it in this way, all for the benefit of one person. There was a strategic plan we came up with last spring and created the following mission statement. To promote a high quality of life for our residents by providing equitable and accessible services that are fiscally responsible, collaborative, customer-focused, and continuously improving. I would expect that after the time, the amount of time and money spent to create that plan and the statement, that the goal would be for council to consistently check their actions against this mission. However, it seems this wasn't done in this case, since the change will have an unnecessary financial impact, both in terms of staff timing and vacancies, was not collaborative, since no broad input from the community was sought, and seems focused on only one customer. Before you vote, I ask you to consider that a positive vote for this ordinance means you're making a decision based on what one person in our community wants. This ordinance could potentially have a negative impact on the often stated goal of the council of addressing housing affordability, and this ordinance fails to provide residents any remedy should someone decide to violate it. And despite, in spite of all that, if you still decide to cast your vote in favor of this ordinance, we say ask you to explain why. Thank you.
There are no more hands on Zoom there.
Mr. Clerk, item number nine.
Announcements.
Just two announcements tonight. Tomorrow is the last Soul Food Farmers Market for the season at the Living Room Parking Lot at twenty-eight ten Sutton from three-thirty until six-thirty PM. And MRH School District is hosting a trunk-or-treat on Saturday, October twenty-ninth, from noon to two PM in the ECC parking lot.
Mr. Clerk, item number ten.
Approval of the October eleventh, twenty-twenty-two City Council Meeting Minutes and Closed Session Minutes.
May I have a motion?
Motion to approve. Second.
Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion carries. Mr. Clerk, item number eleven, please.
Motion to approve a full and Sunday liquor license to Tyler Garcia, owner of Locos Tacos, to be located at seventy-three seventy-four Manchester.
May I have a motion?
Motion to approve the liquor license. Second.
Any discussion?
Tacos.
I'm excited. No further discussion. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion carries. Mr. Clerk, item number twelve, please.
Sustainability Commission Report by Chairman Stefan Denson.
Welcome, Chairman Denson. You would join us at the podium. Just remember to hold the button down the entire time you speak. I'm sorry, we kind of like put you to work just to talk to us.
Mayor Canapper, members of the council, city manager. This evening, I will give you a summary of the activities of the Sustainability Commission. The first item that I will cover is the Maplewood Sustainability Plan, our draft plan. We are implementing this in partial response to, in meeting our responsibilities under the council resolution that brought us into existence. The Sustainability Commission is drafting for approval by City Council on after public review, a sustainability plan for the city of Maplewood. Once implemented, the commission will prepare an annual progress report, including identification of any opportunities to accelerate progress towards meeting the plan goals. The components of the sustainability plan, as well as those of a considered long-range plan, and its express goals and strategies are not intended to be exhaustive. We intend for this annual plan to influence a more comprehensive, coordinated, department-wide, and council-adopted plan. The plan, we call it the MSP, short for Maplewood Sustainability Plan, is organized into categories. Within each category are specific goals, which describes the core of the Maplewood community's vision and represents what is necessary to become a sustainable city. For each goal area, specific indicators, some with specific targets, have been developed to measure progress toward meeting plan goals. Indicators are tools that assist in determining the condition of a system within a category or the impact of a program, policy, or action. Over time, the indicators will provide feedback on our progress towards sustainability. Presently, we are developing a sustainability survey for Maplewood residents to include businesses, industries, as well as city boards and commissions. We plan to use the responses to guide our efforts for a final draft to be presented for review by City Council. We're unable at this time to determine any costs that might be associated with distribution of our survey. We hope to utilize city resources, if possible, and if possible, to also call into partnership the education system, Maplewood Richmond High School District, to help distribute some of the flyers, and some we would physically place at particular locations for people to take and complete. Our goal is to deliver a final draft of our plan in the second quarter of twenty-twenty-three. The next item or activity of the commission is the Sustainability Academy. There was, in my readings, there have been, there have been attempts, there have been activities started by the Environmental Protection Agency to work with communities all ages, all walks in the community to gain an understanding, to improve their knowledge of efforts for sustainability and equity in their communities. In, in an effort to make sustainability a regular part of the discussions throughout our community, I brought that concept from the EPA of a Sustainability Academy before our commission. We are hopeful that we will be able to find partners to work with us as we implement this as tailor-made for students. The basis for the Leadership Academy, the Sustainability Leadership Academy, as, as I said, based on the EPA's own program, but it borrows almost exclusively, almost from the concept outlined in EPA's Collaborative Problem-Solving Program. The basic tenets of the program contained in the EPA's handbook for participants, through practical examples, describes how the CPS model is used to address environmental and/or public health issues in distressed communities. Our academy will use the CPS model to focus on environmental issues, sustainability, and equity. This approach is in keeping with the purpose of the CPS as set out by EPA, that is, to use the model and apply its principles to a particular community or issue in that community or concern. Briefly, the CPS model consists of seven elements, just for your knowledge. Issue identification, excuse me, community vision, strategic goal setting, community capacity building, and leadership development, consensus building and dispute resolution, multi-stakeholder partnerships, and the leveraging of resources, constructive engagement by relevant stakeholders, sound management and implementation, and evaluation, that is, lessons learned and a replication of any best practices that have been developed as a result. Once our program is developed and finalized, considerations should be given, we hope, again, to find a partner, as I believe it is ideal for the education community and for students. I hope that it will be something that will be started in the high school. And after we have had an opportunity to evaluate progress, assuming that we have the high school as a partner, I have not had that conversation. But assuming that we are successful in grades nine, ten, eleven, and twelve, that we would then seek to move the program down through the lower grades. It won't look the same as it would for those in high school, however, it will be just as important and just as impactful, I believe. For this activity, we have also not determined a potential budget impact related to its implementation. We would ask, in anticipation of any possible expenses, that council consider allotting at least five hundred dollars for the academy. The next issue or activity of the commission is called the Mid-County Sustainability Consortium. I received a, an email from the Chair of the Sustainability Commission for the City of Brentwood, who was interested in reviewing our plan and attempting to apply it to a plan of their own. We also agreed to discuss other sustainability issues that might be a common goal for both cities. And in the process of having a discussion, we brought into the mix, so to speak, the City of Clayton's Chair, Sustainability Chair, and eventually brought into the group the Sustainability Chair for the City of Webster Groves. And finally, I learned that the county, Saint Louis County, had hired a Sustainability Director. I was also hoping to make contact with a Sustainability Corrector for the City of Saint Louis, however, that individual is no longer employed, and I'm not aware, at least to date, if that position has been filled. But we have now brought the Sustainability Director for the Saint Louis County Government into the into the fold. And what we are hoping to do, our initial efforts is a coordination of common equity and sustainability activities, not just for our participants, those in our group, but to offer a sustainability blueprint for other cities, businesses, industries, on not just in this region, Saint Louis region, but also on the other side of the river. We are still in the process of developing our identity. We hope, as we refine our goals, funding strategies, strategies, for example, which will include outreach across the region by means of holding a sustainability conference. We're targeting that for spring, but it's in its early stages of development. We hope that this will advance the idea of sustainability and equity as something more than just green. It'll be more than just, we have a trash can that is for plastic, that it is a plan that, and an activity and an effort that will include the individuals who live in the community, who impact that community. And so we will work diligently to achieve that goal. And with that, I conclude my presentation. I'll ask any questions if you have them.
Y'all are doing amazing work. Thank you. Mr. Clerk, item number thirteen, please.
Resolution of the City Council of the City of Maplewood, Missouri, to authorize the submission of a twenty-twenty-two municipal waste reduction grant application to Saint Louis County Department of Public Health to conduct a document shredding event.
May I have a motion?
Motion to approve the resolution. Second.
Any discussion?
Thank you for doing this, by the way.
Mr. Clerk, roll call vote, please.
Councilmember Crossley.
Yes.
Councilmember Fockingham.
Yes.
Councilmember Homa.
Yes.
Mayor Canapper.
Yes.
Councilmember Page.
Yes.
Councilmember Phillips.
Yes.
Resolution twenty-two dash seventy-seven is approved.
Mr. Clerk, item number fourteen.
A resolution of the City Council of the City of Maplewood, Missouri, declaring its support for the creation of the Maplewood Community Growth Fund Foundation.
May I have a motion?
Motion to approve the resolution. Second.
Any discussion? Thank y'all. Mr. Clerk, roll call vote.
Councilmember Fockingham.
Yes.
Councilmember Homa.
Yes.
Mayor Canapper.
Yes.
Councilmember Page.
Yes.
Councilmember Phillips.
Yes.
Councilmember Crossley.
Yes.
Resolution twenty-two dash seventy-eight is approved.
Mr. Clerk, item number fifteen, please.
Bill sixty-two oh six, an ordinance of the City Council of the City of Bill sixty-two oh six, an ordinance of the City Council of the City of Maplewood, Missouri, amending Chapter fourteen, Businesses and Business Regulations, Article thirteen, Section fourteen dash eight oh one, definitions, and Section fourteen dash eight oh two, Short-Term Vacation Rentals, amending the regulations for short-term vacation rentals.
That was the first reading. May I have a motion?
I'm hoping to approve the ordinance. Second.
Any discussion?
I do have some comments. Um, since this was brought to council earlier this summer, I've been soliciting feedback from the community through multiple Facebook posts, emails, and direct questions in conversation with community members, including members of the Planning and Zoning Commission. And the only, and only one person said that they were in favor of modifying our current ordinances. I respect their opinion that the changes would not negatively impact housing affordability. However, this person did not comment or share their opinion on the potential impact to neighbors who would have an unsupervised Airbnb next door. Also, during public comment periods leading up to tonight, only one citizen indicated that they were in favor of changing the ordinance. I hope everyone voting tonight asks themselves, how does the community as a whole benefit from this change? Even the updated ordinance will read, whereas the City Council recognizes that such regulations are necessary to limit the impact of transient occupants in residential neighborhoods and to allow citizens to enjoy quiet enjoyment of their homes and properties. The updated ordinance is in direct opposition to this statement. It is for this reason I will be voting no.
Mister Reese, it's my understanding that Planning and Zoning did have this ordinance, uh, brought before them. Is that correct?
Let me have Mister Clerk respond to that, I could believe.
They were just told of the actual, uh, work sessions. They did not review the ordinance.
All right. I will, I'm, I am the person that brought this forward, so I, I want to speak as to why I brought it forward. And that is because I had a resident, a community member, um, reach out to me and let me know that they wanted to be in compliance with Maplewood law, but as it currently stands, they weren't able to enjoy their retirement abroad as well as have the opportunity to make money while they weren't in their home. I looked at the ordinance. I thought that the ordinance was extremely restrictive, and I thought that the community member's request was valid and fair. And so I brought that to council. And we have been, we have been talking about this. We have been working on this. We have made amendments to this, changes to this after discussions were had. I also want to say that I have talked with community members as well about this ordinance, about the changes to the ordinance, about the ability for them to be able to leave their home for thirty days and, and use their home, uh, for a short-term vacation rental. And to the people that I've spoken with, they are in support of this. They would like to be able to use their home in this matter. So the first person that spoke to me, that person was the catalyst for this. But when I speak to people, they are in support of this. So that's my reasoning on it. The benefits that I see is, one, this does not allow short-term vacation rentals in our apartments. It doesn't. And Councilmember Fockingham has said more than once that that was very important to the council when they were first drafting this. And I will say that it's still important to the council now to ensure that this is not going on in apartments. Because let's just call it what it is. Our apartments are the last affordable housing that we have in Maplewood. So we are ensuring that that's not being touched. And we're allowing homeowners to go through the process of getting a permit, which is not guaranteed. They have to go through a lot of steps to get that permit. It's not guaranteed that they get it. Gave the example last time we were talking about this. If I seek to get a conditional use permit for this purpose, my neighbors on Marietta are going to get notice of this. They can come up, Mister Keter is my, my neighbor. He can come up here and he can tell council, I don't want this next door to me. I don't. And then it is on council to decide how they're going to vote after hearing from those neighbors on that street if they're in opposition. So at, at every point in this process, we have an opportunity to hear from the community that would be directly affected by this. Nothing has been taken from them. As far as legal fees, again, when I asked Attorney Graves what her work was directed towards as far as, you know, these violations, it's directed for, towards folks that are not, that don't have a permit. They are operating illegally. They never came before council. The community member that approached me and asked for this change wants to abide by our ordinance. That's why she came to me, because she wants to follow the law, and she just asked that the law be changed, so it's not so restrictive. And so that's, that's my reasoning as to why I brought it to the council and why I will support it for this vote.
I, um, I'll also be supporting it. Um, I've had some conversations with community members in my ward as well. And, um, pretty roundly supported, and, and you know, what gets people to feel okay about this is when you discuss the hoops that have to be jumped through, and I'm satisfied that you know, we've got sufficient hoops to jump through that we can extend a little additional freedom to our homeowners to use their property as they wish, and I think anytime we can do that, we should. Um, I think it, you know, it's, it's targeted to where it doesn't impact some of the negative, uh, things that we want to. So I, you know, I think, um, from what I'm hearing from, from the, my neighbors is that this is, uh, this is a low-impact decision, and, uh, you know, if this doesn't work out, I'll be first in line to eat some crow, but, uh, I'm willing to give a shot.
All right, any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, please say aye.
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 All those opposed, please say nay.
Nay.
Thank you. Mister Clerk, second reading, please.
Bill sixty-two oh six, an ordinance of the City Council of the City of Maplewood, Missouri, amending Chapter fourteen, Businesses and Business Regulations, Article thirteen, Section fourteen dash eight oh one, definitions, and Section fourteen dash eight oh two, Short-Term Vacation Rentals, amending the regulations for short-term vacation rentals.
May I have a motion?
Motion to approve the ordinance. Second.
Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, please say nay.
Nay.
Thank you. And motion carries. The third and final reading will take place at the next council meeting. Mister Clerk, item number sixteen.
Bill sixty-two oh five, an ordinance of the City Council of the City of Maplewood, Missouri, amending Chapter fifty-six zoning, including Section fifty-six dash three definitions, Section fifty-six dash seventy-two permitted uses, and Section fifty-six dash five sixty specifically prohibited uses, and adding a new Section fifty-six dash seventy-four regulations for the accessory dwelling units, all to allow accessory dwelling units as conditional uses in the SR Single Family Residential Zoning District.
That was the final reading. May I have a motion?
Motion to approve the bill. Second.
Any discussion?
I just want to state again, uh, my thanks for everyone who's worked on this through the course of this summer. Um, I think it's a, a true benefit to the community and, um, truly a position on increasing affordable housing for our community. So once again, thank you to, uh, Mister Traxler and Planning and Zoning and, um, the, uh, the team that's worked on this. So, thanks.
I would like to add this from a staff perspective. Thanks to Anthony Traxler and Brian Herr for the efforts on this.
Mister Clerk, roll call vote, please.
Councilmember Homa.
Yes.
Mayor Canapper.
Yes.
Councilmember Page.
Yes.
Councilmember Phillips.
Yes.
Councilmember Crossley.
Yes.
Councilmember Fockingham.
Yes.
Bill sixty-two oh five becomes ordinance number six thousand.
That's dope. Mister Clerk, item number seventeen, please.
Old business.
Hearing none. Mister Clerk, item number eighteen.
Council Communication.
Hearing none. Mister Clerk, item number nineteen.
Mayor's report.
Thank you. Uh, just want to remind the community that we will have our first Elder Resource Fair on November fifth at the ECC, uh, the Early Childhood Center. It will take place in the preschool gym. We will have vendors present. We will have, um, brokers from insurance agencies like Aetna and, um, United Health, and they'll be there to discuss Medicaid and Medicare and what to look out for. Uh, I think open enrollment is happening right now, and I think it ends maybe December sixth. Um, there's going to be goodie bags and breakfast and lunch and snacks. I'm really trying to entice folks to come. So my little kiss and snacks and treats and stuff, so please come out. Um, if you're an elder, if you are a caregiver, uh, just a family member, and learn about ways to age in place, learn about ways to avoid, um, scams from the internet and telephone, and then also again Medicaid and Medicare. So please join us November fifth uh, at, and it's from nine to one P M. Then also, excuse me, there was the, um, run on this past Saturday for the Ryan Hummert Memorial Scholarship, and you are still able to provide, uh, any donations you like to that scholarship fund, and I know that that scholarship is used to help, uh, MRH Senior, uh, with any college fees that they have, so please consider giving a donation. And then also, we had the, uh, move with the mayor event, the roller disco. I want to thank Ian Linus, also known as DJ Spicy Party Mix. He, he and, um, his wonderful partner did a great job, um, because they pretty much set everything up, and there was even cookies, y'all. So we're gonna do this again in the spring because it was such a great event. And the next time we do it, we will have skate rentals available. So if you don't have skates, could still come rent some skates and have fun with us. So it was a good time. And the last thing that I'd like to just give the council a heads up on is I have been, um, really focused on our legal department in our charter. And what I would like to do is discuss with you all in a work session, um, in November, addressing the charter, making an amendment to it, and including a public defender in our legal department for our charter. As it stands right now, we have a public defender available, but it's by ordinance, and it's in the purview of the county judge. And I would like that to, I would like for us to have a public defender in our municipal court at all times, like we have a prosecuting, uh, a city prosecuting attorney in our court at all times. So I'm going to bring that forward, so we can discuss that and we can actually make changes to our legal system like what was discussed in the Ferguson Commission Report, not just talk about it, but do it. So that concludes my report. Thank you. Yes.
Do you want to propose a city attorney grave about November eighth?
Yes, please. Um, so, thank you very much. So Attorney Graves, uh, we have an election on that day, as you know, uh, and, and that election will take place in this room. Is it possible for us to have a virtual meeting? Okay. Okay, all right then. So we will have a virtual meeting, a virtual work, work session, as well as a virtual general uh, coun- council meeting on November eighth instead of having our meeting in chambers due to the election. All right. Thank you, Mister Reese. I appreciate you. Now that concludes my report. Uh, Mister Clerk, item number twenty, please.
City Attorney's report.
I know.
Thank you. Mister Clerk, item number twenty-one, please.
City Manager's report.
I have, uh, two items. Thank you. Um, first, uh, just a reminder, on November the, um, ninth, uh, we are gonna have a town hall budget meeting. This will be the second time we're doing this. Very excited about it. Last year went pretty well. We're making a few tweaks. Um, well, um, just to summarize the agenda, we'll have a budget overview and timeline, uh, to kind of orient, um, the public. And, um, after we go through introductions and things, and, um, again, this will be in City Hall on Wednesday, November ninth, from six to eight P M. It'll roughly take about two hours. We hope you join us. Also, you can, uh, tune in over Zoom. And then, um, after the overview, uh, there'll be, um, some other, uh, items, but then we'll have breakout sessions, and those will be interactive. And, um, and then we'll report out and summarize those. So we're very excited about getting, um, a good participation in the Budget Town Hall. This is, of course, leading up to the two thousand and twenty-three, two thousand and twenty-four budget, uh, for next year. Um, there will be opportunities leading up to this. If you can't make it, to, uh, post your comments and your ideas, and so look for that on the website. Okay? Um, so that's Wednesday, November ninth. The other item I just wanted to mention, I had Mary Miller share this with me rather than Councilmember Phillips for announcements, because this is kind of near and dear to me, so I apologize, but, uh, there is a, um, Maplewood Police Department kicks off its third annual Warm, Warm Clothing Drive on November fourteenth. And, um, I encourage everyone to participate in this. Uh, people in the room here tonight, as well as people listening, are on Zoom. Um, again, Maplewood Police Department kicks off its third annual Warm Clothing Drive on November fourteenth. Items can be new or gently, um, used, such as coats, hats, gloves, scarves, blankets, and socks. All sizes are needed. Drop-off is located in the lobby of the police department. Again, that begins on November the fourteenth. And that is all I have.
Thank you. Mister Clerk, item number twenty-two.
Public forum.
At this time, the public is invited to step to the podium, if you are with us in chambers, and provide a public comment. And if you are joining us via Zoom, please raise your Zoom hand. Mister Reese will call upon.
Hey, Mayor, there are no hands.
Mister Reese, do we need to go into closed session?
We do not.
Right. Then, um, item number twenty-four is adjourned. May I have a motion?
Motion to adjourn. Second.
All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? We are adjourned.